Hold on.
Thank you. Carissa. Hold on, let me clear that off. Yeah, I already made a mistake. Uh, the pleasure of calling our Monday, December 4th, uh, East Lime Board of Education Regular Meeting, uh, to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. If we can all stand for the pledge. All right, we'll let you lead it then.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and of course, with liberty and justice in store.
All right, um, our first, uh, order of business is election of a Board of Education Chairperson. Uh, so I will call for nominations for Board Chair. We have nomination.
I'd like to nominate Eric Bowne.
I'll second it if I may.
Yeah, we have a nomination. We have a second. Are there any other nominations for Board Chair? Any other nominations for Board Chair? One third time, any other nominations for Board Chair? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close nominations. Discussion, all in favor? All in favor? I didn't hear the discussion. Are you all in favor?
Raise or say aye.
Aye, aye. Everybody. In favor of closing nominations?
Oh, we're doing closing nominations.
We're closing nominations. Yes, they're all in favor of closing nominations.
Did we get a second on the motion?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We did the.
No, we didn't have to put a second.
I'll second to close.
Watching Laura too, because Laura's on the screen up there. I saw her hand.
Got it. Okay, got it.
All right, um, so we've all in favor? Everybody was a yes, okay.
Yes.
All right, nominations are closed. Uh, I will ask now for a motion to elect Eric Bowne as Chairman of the Board of Education.
You already did that. Lisa and Jill did it.
Oh, oh, sorry, um.
Now you're just gonna say.
Now we're just, we're done. Congratulations.
No, no.
My motion.
I'm gonna make the chair down.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not good. So, all in favor? All right. Well, let's count these now.
Yeah.
Bill, are you yes or no?
Yes, I have it. And Laura?
Laura has a yes.
Yep, shaking her head.
All right.
All right, so we have. Yep, so we have, uh, all right, no opposed, no abstentions, motion approved. Congratulations.
Okay, um, so the next order of business is our election of the Board Secretaries. So do I hear any nominations for Board Secretary?
Yes, Eric, I have a nomination. I'd like to nominate Jamie.
Wait a second. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Or, any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, so I need to get a motion to close it? So is there a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Second, second by the Esteban, um, all those, further discussion? All those in favor of closing nominations, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same. Okay, so nominations are closed. So now, all those in favor of electing Jamie as the Secretary? Say aye, or hands up, I guess hands, chip hands. Opposed and abstained. Okay, congratulations, Jamie. Okay, um, okay, so that takes care of the order of the business. Now we move on to public comment. So do we have any public comment for tonight?
Diane, you might not be able to stay right there.
Stay right there, Diane. We can hear you. I can see that in the ceiling. Yeah, yeah.
Stay right there.
Well, this is a little intimidating. I finally got used to talking.
Sorry.
I mean, you can come to the podium.
No, 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 no.
It'll be over by the time. So, uh, first of all, congratulations to the new elected Board of Education members and congratulations, Eric Bowne, on your position again as the Board of Ed Chair. I just want to say, as, oh, Diane Swan, Seven North Beachwood Road, Niantic, and for the logistics there. President, Star System Incorporated, very excited that we're on seven years that we finally got on the agenda for a five-year agreement with a potential for longer to work with the Board of Education to bring programming back, not only for the students of Eastline, but for the Eastline citizens as well as the regional community. It's been a long haul, very proud of the work that, that our Board Directors have done, our volunteers, our advisors, our community members, the donors. Donors who put up the Strike a Match campaign with $10,000. Our family especially was able to secure the $40,000 projector, the Gisus R7 projector that we now have in the planetarium. This summer, in collaboration with Annalise Faziano, thank you so much. Our team working together under your direction and leadership has been invaluable, and I can't say enough thank yous to you. Um, as a result, our Planetarium series over the summer was wonderful. We continue that with the fall. We were able to provide shows for students in Eastline. They came from the Summer Fun Club, and we had seventy-two students in working with Andrea Scott in her program there. In addition, on November 7th, we had over eighty-two students, so we had to add a fourth show to our programming that day, and it was phenomenal. I had the opportunity to, uh, educate some members of the tech ed team on the programming software that we have available, so that this way we can roll it out for students at Eastline High School, which will incorporate everything from, um, one of the gentlemen who's working with his students on, uh, Skies, doing rockets, and they'll be doing different things, um, and being able to utilize the programming software that we have. Uh, the regional community we've had, we've partnered with the New York League of Southeastern Connecticut, so we've offered sensory-friendly shows for neurodivergent children and adults and their families. Those were, uh, well-attended and very successful, very excited about that. Now with this partnership or agreement that we're calling it, um, so it's a discussion action item, so I hope every member of the Board of Ed votes in favor of it this evening, because it's truly an untapped asset for the region. We have a lot of potential things. People have reached out to me within the last couple of weeks alone. Educators, we've had the VFW, we've had, um, a social-emotional, uh, person who would like to do meditation with astronomy and the stars up above on the Planetarium Sky Theater. So there's so many opportunities for this, and in addition for us to do that, we partner with you and look forward to being able to provide some upgrades to the actual room itself, in addition to the doors and stuff that lead to and from the planetarium, as well as, um, some different things that we kind of have there. Um, in addition, we'd like to have entered into, um, public record. I will read the talkies for you. I, I won't read it, but our, um, our committees, um, minutes from the ad hoc committee that took place on October 24th, so we would like those entered into public records. So one have a leg to another, sorry.
Thank you, Diane.
Did you say that?
So again, I, I can't say enough about thank you for opening the doors to us this summer and letting them show you what the potential is for the Gisus R7 projector. In addition to the fact that it's portable, so we have the opportunity, um, to work with the Niantic, with the Eastline Public Library for the annual solar eclipse. We had over a hundred and something, um, people, um, attend the shows that were set up. They need a stream going on. So the Eastline Public Library will be presenting to their Board of Directors to, to talk about the success that it was. We worked collaboration with the Niantic, um, uh, Children's Museum. We borrowed their portable dome, their portable dome with our portable projector, so it's a great collaboration all around. Again, saying up good things about the commitment that Annalise has made, the time that she's dedicated to working with us, and some ideas and suggestions she's had, in addition to your custodial staff under the direction of Mike Hewitt, and Curtis and Wong have done fantastic, um, unlocking doors, getting us in. You know, when I can't find company, they were able to, you know, help me out with different things, so it's been wonderful. So again, I hope that every member of the Union will vote this evening that it ends up being, um, that when the discussion is over, the action is that we are fully in agreement, so that will help us to secure grants moving forward and provide additional opportunities, not only for our students of Eastline, the community and the region as a whole.
Thanks, Diane. Thanks, Diane.
Any other public comment?
My name is Jason Devel. I live in Five McKinnon Place here at Eastlime. I'm a math and science teacher down in the town of Old Seabrook. Um, I would also like to speak in support of the Planetarium and the five-year agreement that you guys are considering tonight. When I was a younger man, uh, back where I grew up in Delaware, my friends and I in high school would take the hour-long trip up to Philadelphia Fridays, Saturday nights to go watch the laser light shows there, and you know, I, I really see that as being an asset that we could have here in our town. We could be drawing people here and letting them know about all the wonderful things that we have, in addition to the STEM, the, uh, educational assets that come with a Planetarium. I think it's a, it's a cultural resource, like she said. You don't even know, um, what sort of programming will develop there, uh, until people kind of approach you with these great ideas like meditation. It's just wonderful. I mean, I really think the, uh, the, the, the potential is there for some really wonderful stuff to take, take, you know, really excited, and I hope you guys will consider voting for it. Thank you.
Did you give your address?
Yes.
Other public comment?
I'll state your name and, uh, yeah, address. Thank you.
Elise Pietrowski. I'm at Five Barone Road in Niantic, um, and I'm also here just to speak about the Star System, and, um, I have two young daughters, a seven and four-year-old, and uh, we, my, my daughter Emma and I have been to multiple shows. I'm at the Planetarium this past summer. She keeps asking when we're gonna go back. We're looking forward to the new series starting back up. And I also have a four-year-old who has also given some feedback to Diane Swan, which is quite funny, but, um, she's also, they're looking at making maybe a little bit of a shorter show for a younger audience as well. We also went to the, um, Personal Solar Eclipse at the library, the Community Senator, um, a couple of weeks ago, and the both girls had loved it, and we were able to do the portable, um, Planetarium there as well, and it was awesome. It was just as good as the Planetarium here that's, um, at the high school. And we just, we support it. We love it. Um, I, I, we'd love to continue to go and see shows as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Another public comment? Public comment? Please.
Justin Nowar, uh, Dean James Drive, Eastlime. I just wanted to say that my daughter, who was an Eastlime graduate, took an astronomy course here, and that turned her on. She has continued that through Cornell and University of Arizona. She is now a PhD. And she, she was one of the prime movers for the NASA, um, Mars Reconnaissance Orbiter. Uh, she has worked on Insight, a couple other programs, Juno, and, uh, she's, uh, now a Brown.
Congratulations.
Thank you much. There are public comment? Public comment? Public comment? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna close public comment. And now we move on to a pretty exciting part of the agenda. It's nice having all these people here, but we have some special recognition. We have three different special recognitions that are all, um, very exciting and, and real happy that we're able to have the, that everybody here represented. So first, we have a grade six student author, and you may have read the article in the day paper about it, and, um,
Yeah, I'm gonna turn it right over to Mrs. Kelly, uh, Middle School and background.
My name is Claudia Kelly. I'm the interim principal of Eastline Middle School. Um, Nadia, why don't you stand up for me? This is Nadia, and she is a sixth-grade student at Eastline Middle School. And I had the pleasure and the honor of talking with her about the article that was featured in the day last week. And I was just so inspired after listening to her and how poised and how just amazing she was, and kind of highlighting in our conversation, um, Nadia had indicated that she really kind of started the, um, assignment or the project of, um, having a book published as an assignment in her fourth-grade classroom with Mr. Conlon, and that continued to grow. So Nadia, can you share with, with the people in the room a little bit of how you extended it outside the classroom and how you ended up with a book published?
Um, so every Friday in my fourth-grade class, we would, um, write like a story, and then when the schooling was over, um, I decided I wanted to continue mine. So in the summer, I wrote it, and then my parents contacted a publishing company when I finished, and they helped us publish it.
Bring a book, and can you show everybody the book and the title?
It's called The Crystal Queen.
Real high, Nadia, speaking, we, we, here you go.
It was interesting, because in the article, when I had read and I was talking with Nadia last week, I, you know, it quotes her as saying, how did she feel? And she said her simple word answer, happy. And that just came through so clear in my conversation with her, and she also shared with me, believe it or not, she is already working on book two, and her long-term goal is to have a trilogy. So she blew me away. When I was in sixth grade, I wasn't publishing books, so. And she actually, she is leaving here and heading to Wallingford to head to gymnastics, because she has a big meet coming up this weekend. So she's very well-rounded, and we are very proud of you, and I have a feeling that you're gonna be back in this room when you're in high school with so many great things to come. So you should be proud of yourself.
Awesome. Good job.
Okay, you can get to gymnastics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last week was a great week at.
Next on the agenda, yes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. We have a, uh, eighth-grade student inventor, and I'll turn it right.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Great weekend at Eastline Middle School. So this, the last, my last student had an article published in the day, and social media, sometimes it's middle school, can take sometimes two different turns, positive and sometimes not so positive. So it was brought to my attention by somebody in the building through social media. We had an eighth-grade student, Shashrika Das, or Sasha, she goes by at school, and the, um, I had an opportunity to bring her down to my office again and chat with her, and, um, Sasha entered a worldwide contest, worldwide, and, um, I also discovered in speaking with her, um, she basically, in this particular, uh, she has, uh, her prototype, um, on exhibit, and it is in a museum in London at this time, and her, um, her prototype, and she's gonna talk a little bit about it, um, has to do with machine learning, and it's an advanced field in computer science and mathematics. Um, so the device that she built, um, had to do with detecting a gas leak, um, to be able to utilize, um, in real life, so her device can smell diesel leaking from the tank and alert the owner in real life. So Sasha, why don't you come on up, come on up, please? She brought, um, a prototype of the device. And what I also learned, because when the letter came out, um, inviting her tonight, it had made reference to, um, something else, and I read it, and it was, um, it was a coffee spill, and I thought, oh, gosh, we made a mistake. So then I Googled it, so not only does she have one device, but she has multiple devices, and this is again, a grade eight student. It just, it just is amazing. So I'm gonna let you talk a little bit, Sasha.
All right, so basically, um, I have participated in a contest called Coolest Project. Um, I kind of got the information from my dad, and like, I kind of started participating in that contest since I was in grade five. And, uh, this is the device I made when I was in grade six, uh, for gas leak detection, uh, where like, if there's any leaking, like, your, uh, gas tank, like, for example, in your basement, you'll be able to detect that with this multi-channel gas sensor. So using that sensor, you can be able to, uh, uh, see what the circumstances is, and you'll be able to alert the homeowner.
That's awesome.
What museum in London, and how long will it be on exhibit?
So it's a permanent exhibit in London.
Okay, good.
And so basi- uh, what was the other question again?
What museum in London? There are many.
V and A Museum, uh, the book form is Victorian Albert.
Okay, okay, got it. Victorian Albert.
Very cool.
Very cool.
There's a YouTube video of your coffee mention too, right? So I'll share that with the full Board of Education, so they can see that later this week.
That was actually inspired by my dad, who whenever he turns on his coffee machine, sometimes.
Good video. Good invention.
And Sasha's also very driven. Do you want to share with everybody here what your future aspirations and hopes and dreams are?
Yeah, like, I hope to be a software engineer. Like, I'm inspired by my dad pretty much, because he does this sort of stuff at home, so.
That's awesome.
We are most proud of you, and again, I have a feeling we're gonna continue here.
Great, and we have another special recognition from Lily B. Haynes. We have a Viking Ballot Award.
All right, I'll turn it over to, uh, Mr. Cal Ruth. Lily B., brave the trek to the podium.
Right, good evening. Um, as any one of my fellow colleagues, um, who has been in a similar position can tell you, and with so many incredible staff members, um, to choose from, this is actually a really difficult decision to make. Um, so there really are so many people who routinely go above and beyond, um, the Call of Duty and are worthy of consideration. Um, but of all of them, one definitely stood out. Um, so this evening, it is my honor to stand before you tonight to recognize Lily B. Haynes, Occupational Therapist, Alicia Rose, as our Viking Ballot recipient this month. Um, you know, Principal Kelly's observation, um, of how we reward exceptional staff was spot-on, um, by asking them to do more. Of course, uh, and if I'm being, I'm, I'm, I'm not even sure Alicia has to be asked. Um, time and time again, she sees something that needs to be done, and she steps up, um, and gets it done. Just incredible. Um, in just the year and a half that I have worked with Alicia, um, this has been, you know, on display countless times. Um, so one of the first instances of this that I noted um, last year, when we had some new students with, um, some anticipated needs join our school, um, Alicia was instrumental in orchestrating support for them, um, architecting schedules, and inserting herself right in the mix to pitch in, um, to provide, um, much-needed support, um, all while continuing to support her, um, full caseload herself, mind you. Um, one time I can think of when I had to ask Alicia, uh, was last year, um, when I realized I hadn't planned anything for paraprofessionals during an upcoming PD Day, which may have at that point been a day or two before, uh, and I approached Alicia to see if she shouldn't, if she wouldn't mind offering, uh, a workshop for them, um, which she was, oh, not only, um, happy to do, but she then very quickly opened it up to all available paraprofessionals in the district. So I, I thought that was a pretty, um, special thing for her to do, um, and just those two, you know, quick examples really do epitomize, um, who Alicia is, which is an advocate for children, um, and the ultimate team player. So, uh, if I'm being honest, I'm actually, uh, pretty fearful of the day that Alicia decides to retire, because she's involved in so many things across our building and district. Um, you know, upon reflection and, and putting together some remarks here this evening, um, they, there are numerous. Um, so in addition to being an outstanding occupational therapist, um, some of the other include, um, Alicia is one of two of our PBIS coaches, um, at the building-based level. So she works with, um, other committee members to review school-wide data and systems, uh, and offers support to teachers and students who are struggling with challenging behaviors um, at school. She serves on the District-wide Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, uh, Committee, and has been an invaluable resource, um, when working through some trickier situations in my building, um, as well as providing ongoing training to staff. She is one of two TCI trainers, so that's Therapeutic Crisis Intervention, um, in our district, so she works to stay current herself, um, as well as to train dozens of district-wide staff each year, which I believe you're just doing today. Uh, beyond students on her official caseload, Alicia also supports students through our MTSS, um, for either occupational therapy needs or, again, behavioral needs. Um, Alicia is one of the first to respond, um, to calls from, um, uh, her teammates, uh, for team assistance over the walkie. Um, you know, when other students are exhibiting some challenging behaviors, and so that is something, um, that I know her colleagues and I can both attest, uh, is incredibly helpful um, and pretty unique, um, as well. Um, perhaps most impressive of all, despite all of that, she still makes time to host aspiring occupational therapy students. Uh, I think you're on your second or definitely second, maybe your third at this point, since I've started.
Exactly, yeah.
Uh, investing hours of her time to teach and inspire the next generation of, um, occupational therapists. So that's just the list of the things that I'm aware of. Um, my instinct tells me that there are plenty more examples. Um, Alicia is always thinking about inclusivity and how to ensure we are a welcoming space for all. She and her colleague did some research last year and learned that we have nineteen different languages spoken or signed, um, by students' families. Um, they then created a welcoming hello message in each of those languages that was displayed, uh, in our main hallway for everyone to see, um, which this year has actually inspired our, uh, morning announcements. So every morning, um, fourth-grade volunteers, um, do our morning announcements, and, uh, they open and close with a hello and a closing in a different, um, language every day, and I think that has been a really nice touch. I'll end by sharing one of, uh, my first and fondest memories, uh, of Alicia, which, um, we had just completed our first day, uh, professional development in August, uh, before school started last year. Um, and at the end of the day, she and a colleague, um, surprised me by presenting me with a gift in front of our entire faculty, um, that I will forever hold near and dear, a sign which I admittedly still need to find a place to hang, um, that says, "Welcome to our hive." Um, so Lily B., we really lean into the B, uh, part of that. This thoughtful gesture, uh, is the perfect way for me to punctuate how genuine, caring, and welcoming Alicia Rose is. Um, this small act of kindness was really moving, uh, for me personally, um, to begin the school year in a brand-new school, a district, um, and to start off in that way was just very special. So with that, I would like to congratulate my friend and colleague, um, Alicia Rose, on receiving this award, certainly deserving of it.
This to you. Now, uh, Alicia, I would never accept a letter of retirement from you, so you think that's retired. Number one, not happening, no. Um, we're gonna turn this around, actually, get a picture. Oh, oh, yeah, oh, sorry. Okay, here, I'm gonna present this to you on behalf of the Board of Education and everybody in the district. Excellent, all right, and we're gonna turn around and go this way.
Right, it does, it works nice. It's just, it's just like.
You know, fond memories of, as Brian just mentioned, of Alicia, you know, everything that he said. She's been such a wonderful advocate for students and, and the work that she does in the schools, but walking in the building and always hearing the great things about her family too, is what's really nice, and I always enjoy, you know, her sharing, uh, those pieces about her kids and family and college and everything else, so. So, thank you, Alicia, for everything you've done.
Yeah, so if any people who were recognized, if they want to leave, you're welcome to stay. You're welcome to leave, so, uh, yes. Give, give a minute. Yeah. Okay, uh, moving on, we have some minutes to approve. We have the November 20th Board of Ed Special Meeting to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 20th Board of Education Special Meeting.
Any changes or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or a thumbs up?
Or a thumbs up? Opposed, abstain?
I'm gonna abstain.
Sorry, oh, no, that's okay. So I was trying to figure out what Laura was. Can you hear us, Laura?
Uh now I can.
Okay.
It disappeared for a bit there.
Okay, we were just approving the November twentieth uh special Board of Ed special meeting.
You got it.
Okay, okay, all right, so that was approved. Opposed and abstained, so I think we have uh Bill, Kate, and Glee abstained.
I can't find board dogs, I can't remember if I was here, so.
Okay.
Sorry, thanks.
So those minutes are approved and then moving on to the minutes from the November twentieth Board of Ed meeting committee of the whole meeting, the budget workshop.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the November twentieth Committee of the Whole Budget Workshop.
Second.
Any changes, discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh opposed and abstain. Mainly abstained. Bill, did you approve of abstain?
No, okay, abstain.
Okay, so those minutes are approved. Thanks, everyone. Now we have. I don't think we have a slide, no, 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 okay. So then moving on, we have uh consent agenda item. Anyone want to make a motion to approve it or does someone want to pull it for discussion?
I'd like to pull it for discussion, please.
Sure, let's pull it then, let's make it eight.
I'm gonna find that, I was gonna recommend it. Oh, okay, but I don't know, go ahead.
Well, if anybody wants to pull it, we just pull it, so we can discuss it, so we'll pull it in eight E.
Eight E.
And then we'll discuss it in eight E, so it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you.
No, okay, so then we're on to uh connection items. And the first is discussion action items. Other, we have a proposed appointment of a Board of Ed member. Finish, please. So I would like to open the nominations for uh to replace the seat that was created by Candace Carl- Carlson with her vacancy and resigning. With the term expiration of twelve one twenty-five. The nomination is now open.
I'd like to nominate Vivek Prabhut for this position. He has submitted his resume and a letter of interest. He had a son who graduated, went through the system. Vivek is a PhD, works at Pfizer, is passionate about education, would bring diversity to our board, and understands systems and how to functionalize processes from what I can understand from reviewing his letters and his uh particular details.
Well, you're second.
Second.
Bill seconds. Okay, are there any other nominations?
You have to call for discussion.
No, we gotta get all the nominations.
We didn't do the last chance.
Yeah, I call for discussion.
But you get all the nominations, bring the nominations forward, see what happens, the candidates.
The way it's been done before, because it's one person.
It's done the same way as we do for for nominations.
Call for discussion, you vote, and then say yes or no, and then you go on. I mean Jamie and I are saying one thing, we're agreement of that, so.
Yeah, I haven't.
We did this one, we did this probably two years ago, was it two years ago?
So so when we, no, not in two years, it was a number of years ago. And and we had the two candidates get up and give a talk. I think you were one, were you one of the two? Yeah, we gave we gave both candidates a chance to uh speak, so I don't think we. That was what we did at practice previously.
I I don't think that's the. I think it's. I'm gonna go with Jamie, but nominate, vote, yea, nay, nominate, vote, yea, nay, nominate, vote, yea, nay, and along the line until you find someone.
You give both candidates an opportunity to speak then.
You don't.
That's what public comment for.
That's why it's always been whoever could first make the nomination. Again, that's just my belief. But uh I have a Robert's Rules book with me.
Up to the board, uh obviously, that that's, I remember both candidates giving the opportunity to uh to to speak, that's just how I recall it, but it's up to the board.
That's that's been our practice, I'm just trying to.
It's not been the practice.
No, that has been the practice, that's what we did last time.
Shannon agrees with me. It's because it's it's not a policy.
Well, I mean. Again, if you're following Robert's Rules in our previous.
Yeah, but that's for chair.
That that that's, so I guess that's what's in question, yeah, if you're not, if you're following something that's different.
I mean, if you're Googling this, what?
I'm not Googling.
No, I'm not. I'm just, I'm on the website, I'm just, I'm just trying to formulate the question, but.
Like, it would go this emotion, it would be what would a motion would be.
But motion.
A motion would be, you vote. You vote, you motion, you search, you second, you discuss, you vote, emotion, you first, you second.
The language, let you replace. Talk of the cycle.
You just cycle through until someone is voting, same with anything we did with the budget when we did it twelve times one year. You just keep going through until something is approved. Same thing with chair, a couple of years ago, we voted three times for chair or three times for secretary.
I remember that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, everyone, why don't, why don't we take um take five minutes or five to ten-minute recess and just so we can look and make sure, or we may need to table this.
Yeah, you want to do it right.
Um because we are not, you know what our practice was, so if the rules are different than what our practice was, then we need to firm that up. So sorry, everyone.
Have a sergeant of arms on their phone uh phone number? I'm just, does anyone have anyone, they?
Is that holding my Board of Ed bag?
Brainstorming. I would say, keep it live. All right, Grant, keep it live. Just a recess, not a.
Yeah, we really should, yeah. Our attorney.
Yeah, I remember looking.
Isn't it supposed to take a biobreak?
So recess, yeah. Fall back to order, shorten.
And ask questions. Articulates that process, basically the same process.
Exactly.
It's in here. Depends, you can do it.
Yeah, never can nominate. That question would be like, what do we? That's the question would be like.
Have the opportunity to.
That's how. That's how we're as previously.
How it's articulated in Robert's. I mean, Robert's Rules is pretty straightforward.
Hey, yeah.
There's not a lot of rules.
I agree.
It's getting bedtime-y.
I'd like to call them meeting back to order at six fifteen. And this is an important decision and important discussion, and I really, we we do need to make sure we follow procedures correctly. We tried to reach our attorney, who is always very helpful with this. And um we should do the follow-up procedures right, so my recommendation is that we table this until the next meeting, which is unfortunately not until Jan.
January eighth.
We need a special meeting, it's past thirty days. Well, I would like, I think we would. No, I know that, but what I'm saying is then the board, then the board of selectmen would make it. Yeah, I would rather we make it, so.
No, we're gonna make, so we're gonna have to call a special meeting. Next week, the eleventh, and we can everyone check their calendars, and sorry, the following. Three weeks is Christmas Day, so I assume we're not gonna do that, so it's uh so we have a week of fourteenth.
We have, yeah, we have a budget workshop, you can do it tight with that.
Fourteenth, we have our budget workshop.
What time is, I'm sorry?
Six o'clock.
At six o'clock, we could start at five and have a special meeting. Uh and.
Fourteenth.
On the fourteenth.
Do you need a motion?
Well, it's just, I wanna, I wanna check people's calendars and then we'll end up. Laura, can you make, I don't know if you can hear everything that's going on, we're trying to defer this discussion. Um we're looking at December fourteenth at five PM prior to the budget workshop, which starts at six PM. That look okay on your calendar? Does not?
Can you hear me?
No, we can't.
Oh, you can't hear me now, okay, I can hear you now. Um the illustrious Eastland High School graduate and his family are coming to visit us then. So we're gonna be tied up for those last two weeks in December. I can zoom in, but I can't be there.
Yeah, can you zoom in for at least like a half hour or something at five o'clock?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I can zooming in is fine, I just.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's, that that works fine, is.
Laura, we don't expect you here, we don't expect.
Fourteenth.
Yeah.
December fourteenth, okay, great.
Esteban.
He doesn't love the fourteenth, but he's gonna live with it?
Yes.
Bill, you can do the fourteenth, okay?
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Esteban.
Okay, so we need a motion to table this until uh December fourteenth. Go ahead, second, Esteban, second.
We need to explain, explain why we're tabling it.
No, okay, just ask. So the motion has to say when you're tabling it to.
To Thursday, December fourteenth, at four and five PM, you're in this room.
We put a time to it, just just say.
I thought we said, I thought she said.
Yeah, just to be on the safe side. We can put in the moment, we're we're settling on five o'clock, but we'll just.
Can I ask a question, please?
Hold on.
Oh, second, I'll second and ask a question.
Already been seconded. I was just getting the clarification on the motion, sorry. Okay, got it. I got it.
Men's question.
No, no, I just wanna know. I just have a way. I have a way. So we're gonna basically so everyone in the room understands, and for my edification too, is. We're gonna speak with our attorney and get her, her opinion on it.
Tell us, yeah, be.
And so. What are. Be in writing, or we're gonna do?
And get a legal. Yeah. Like a refund.
Yes, I.
Yeah, that's the best way to do it.
All working off the same page.
Mm-hmm.
Which is sounds like. Different interpretations and that what that's.
The law. Pardon?
That's what happens with the law. Well, I know, I'm just like, I know, maybe I'm being naive, but I just want to be sure we're all on the same. Point. Same. Can I just say this? Can we, a display at the Victorian Albert Museum is incredible. Is that the young woman left?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, my God.
Can we?
I'm sorry.
Stay on top. Kinda, we have, so we.
Sorry.
Um, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye. I'm sorry.
Most. Saying.
Sorry.
So we will table that topic uh, till the December fourteenth. Meeting. With me. Apologies to everybody in the audience. Uh. It's important that we do this right. Uh, so it's. Um, so the time is, is worthwhile. So we're gonna move on from uh, six A and move to seven A, discussion action items instructional. And we have the Lily B. Haynes principal report and have a whole bunch of visitors. Thank you, Mr. Cowgill. All right.
Hey, um, hello again. I am really grateful for the opportunity um, tonight to share some of the exciting work happening at Lily B. Um, as it relates to explicit instruction, which is of course aligned to our work um, and district goals and in support of the board's goals as well. Um, so at Lily B. Um, this year, like the other um, elementary schools, our school improvement team or SIT. Um, has been abbreviated, has been incredibly helpful in moving the work of explicit instruction forward. Um, with our colleagues. Um, so before inviting some of them up, um, I'll just share briefly, I promise briefly, that um. Since August, our SIT team has been engaging in a book study, um, which has really been a nice lever um, and anchoring um, conversation point. Um, for us, not only in that leadership team, but also um, schoolwide and then it ties in really nicely district-wide um, to all of that work. Um, in fact, our um, school improvement team has sort of taken on a quasi um, P deck, you know, building-based P deck committee role, as I, I think I've shared with um. Some folks too, um, which has been really valuable and helpful for me. Um, so we. Will um, through the process of our SIT meetings, we'll work through um, trying to identify the most salient information to share out with our team. Um, and then, you know, I will get uh, some really valuable feedback about how to go about doing that. Um, and so based on the feedback we've received after a couple of P D sessions, it seems to be working. Um, and I am really grateful for um, the, the members of that team, many of them, um, this evening. So um, huge shout out to them. Um, all right, so first off, um, I am going to invite um, Mrs. Rock, our literacy coach. Uh, and Mrs. Abbott, uh, first grade teacher, um, both SIT team members. Who are joined by students from Mrs. Abbott's class who have been waiting very patiently uh. To share and demonstrate um, some of what the express, explicit instruction looks like in their classroom. Um, after, um, we'll hear from Mrs. Arnold, uh, our math coach and third grade teacher, Mrs. L L. To additional um, SIT team members um, about um, their work through coaching cycles and how that all supports um, our building-based work. So. Without further ado, I will invite. Mrs. Rock and Mrs. Mrs. Rock.
And Mrs. Abbott. So I'm Kristen Rock, the literacy consultant at Lily Haynes, and this is Joey Abbott, um, the wonderful. Collaborative first grade teacher. Um, we just wanted to share um, our literacy, our literacy coaching cycle tonight. Um, it's focused on phonemic awareness. And phonemic awareness is really the precursor to reading. It teaches students to hear and work with um. Work with sounds and spoken words, making phonics more effective. Um, Mrs. Abbott and I discussed the need for a systematic explicit resource to teach phonemic awareness over the summer when we were having our SIT team meeting. Um, I'll actually along with two other kindergarten teachers, and when we researched it, we really found that the Haggerty resource is very popular and effective with other districts who have also adopted. Fundations. So um, our coaching cycle was based on um. Our universal screen data, which is how we drive our instruction. Um, and along with that is our progress monitoring too. And I am in Mrs. Abbott's room, um, three days a week, working with her in the small groups. Um, and we've been doing this since the end of October. And I know we're here tonight, but this is our week to finish up our coaching cycle, so. We can send the data when we have it this week, but we didn't wanna start on a Monday after the long weekend, so. We're just prepping the kids for their end of year, end of coaching cycle um, assessment that's coming up. So. We definitely wanted to share um, a little bit about what it looks like in the classroom, explicit instruction, corrective feedback, and we have um. Some of our smart, very, very patient first graders who they just kinda wanna share um, with Mrs. Abbott a little bit about what we do in the classroom to support phonemic awareness skills. Right, I, I would like to give a shout out to this group first, because they have been so patient and. Box. And role models for what good learning looks like, right? So if you wanna stand up. And I don't know if it's easy to see for everybody, but you can just stand here in front of.
Come up front. All right. All right. Nice one. Job.
You know what? It was. All right, so vowels are usually a very hard thing for students to discriminate, so we have different motions that we do to help us find out. So what should we do for vowels?
Rollercoaster.
We're gonna roller coaster it. All right. I'm gonna say a word, you'll repeat it. We will roller coaster it and find the middle sound. Are you ready? Say shock.
Shock. Sh.
Ah. Long, long or short?
Short.
Short, good job. Say wait.
Wait. One. Eight. Eight.
Long or short?
Short.
Long, right? It says its own name. It's long. Awesome. All right, here's the next one. You ready? Hitch.
Hitch. Ha. Eh. Eh.
Long or short?
Short.
Very good. If it says, yeah, it's short. All right. Think you wanna be ready?
I'm excited.
I know. So good at it. Here we go. Cute.
Cute. You. You.
You.
Long.
Long, why is it long, Amina?
Cause. The E. Cause it is silent, but it makes the. Other vowel say some name.
Long.
All right, I'm gonna say a word or a word part. You're gonna repeat it. I'm gonna add a sound to the beginning and we're gonna blend it together. So blending sounds, word parts, parts of words is also really important for both reading and decoding. All right, are you ready? Say ed.
Ed.
Add sh and the word. Say at. Add eh and the word. Say. Ort.
Ort.
Add sh and the word.
Short.
All right, say har.
Har.
Add sh and the word.
Har.
Nice job. So here is one that comes up a lot in our reading groups too. So if you know one word part, you can usually get to another one for both reading or writing. So we are going to be doing some, I'm gonna say a word, you're gonna repeat it, we're gonna do some. Substituting or.
Change.
Changing. Substitute is another word for changing. All right. Here we go. Say west.
West.
Change w to ch and the word. Wow, all right, say bird.
Bird.
Change bu to th and. You were before even asked the question. Say pen. Change p to w and the word. When, say maid.
Maid.
Change m to sh and the word. Awesome.
The rock dog. They need to take a bow. Thank you, Kenny. Very much, everybody.
Go back to follow.
Eating show. And Catherine has a skit. Is it gonna be like hopscotch number? Yes. You did great job. All right. So we just wanna highlight the powerful work that we're doing with explicit instruction in a third grade coaching cycle. We don't have any adorable. So we will stand up here and be cute and funny. All right, um, so the first, did you give a warning? Yeah. Okay. So we had a hard time doing this without creating a handout to take you right through our coaching cycles. We're sorry. Um, so our coaching cycles start every time with our data and what the students are doing. And then we sit down with the data and we think about where do we want our kids to get. So um. We look at um, what the students are doing and the best path forward. So at the beginning of the year, Catherine came to me and said, um. And that's another beautiful thing about our coaching cycles is there, it's all teacher-selected. Here's what's going on in the classroom right now. Let's work on this together. And Catherine said, we've gotta look at. We need to look at subtraction and subtraction with regrouping is a big third grade goal. I'm working on subtraction, addition and subtraction within a thousand. And um, the students, they come to third grade really solid, really concrete in their understanding, working with manipulatives, drawing pictures with base ten. And um, we take them from that real concrete to. Really the algorithm by the end of third grade. We have all this beautiful space in between and um. The students kind of go through strategies and a lot of times we will find that they fall back on that base ten. So we really, Catherine and I were talking, we really wanted to develop a really solid, strong understanding um, to move them, yeah, to move them forward. So we sat down, we analyzed the data, we picked our standard that we were working on, which was that um, subtraction within a thousand based on place value. Moving towards the algorithm and I mean, we knew we wanted to focus on um, our district goal, our school goal, and looking at the explicit instruction. So one of the target areas that Catherine had was really looking at worked examples and non-examples, providing feedback to the students. And really looking at those prerequisite skills, what could we do to really strengthen their understanding? So they um, could use their understanding of place value to solve really any problem that was given to them. Um, some of the things we decided to do was develop some routines that centered around building number sense. We decided that um. We were gonna look at some routines that could be brought into the classroom. Some of the things we came up with was I have you need. Looking at notice and wonder is a really um, powerful mathematical routine that we use all the time. So we use notice and wonder, same and different. Another routine, which is called or you could, and um, that provides students an opportunity to look at solving problems lots of different ways. And provides a little competition where they're trying to come up with lots of different ways um, to solve the same problem. Another thing we did was our thin slice problems, which was a strategy taken from a building thinking classrooms book. And um, to increase time that students were engaged on.
And so part of this, of the meat of the whole cycle is really sitting down with an expert in the field and getting um, some really pointed, targeted. Um, ideas for how to maximize instruction. So we sat down and we looked at some of those. The habits and some of the misconceptions that we were noticing in the students' work. And then we decided where we wanted to focus our instruction. And if you just look at the back, you can see where at the fore coaching. Students have a strategy of drawing base ten blocks for subtraction. And then after coaching. They're doing something that's much more sophisticated with work on the number line and chunking parts of numbers to get to the ending um. The ending number. And also that's being extended to word problems. So there's so much that has to happen to get them from the point A to the point B. And that's where we spend a lot of our time with our lessons and adjusting the instruction, talking about who needs a little bit more, who is ready to go. And putting them into groups to work smarter and maximize our time. After we are planning, done planning lessons, we teach lessons, then we sit down and reflect. And a lot of the times we use an exit ticket to adjust our instruction, kind of gauge where the kids are at the end of the lesson. And that is a lot of discussion between Karen and I with what we need to do next. We can have a lesson progression and then just change it um, at the end of our lesson, because we realized that they need more teaching with something. Um, and then we go on to the end of our coaching cycle, which is when we finish the six-week. Um, cycle, we talk about what the next steps are.
Yeah. So um, we, we found the students, we had um, ninety-three percent of students at the end of this coaching cycle who were reaching goal. So it was really um, beautiful work. And um. We were so pleased with how powerful it was. What we do at the end of the coaching cycle though is decide how we will continue the practice. Using centers that um, Catherine is now using in the classroom, so the kids are continuing that practice. And um. We also planned a boost group. This was done in two third grade classrooms, so we pulled some of the students who needed a little bit additional work with place value and breaking numbers apart. And we formed a boost group so that we could provide that additional support in a little bit more time.
And there was a lot of work that went into it. So it was really nice to see the fruits of the labor. This is something that we don't normally see until the end of the year, where they're really using a strategy proficiently. And it was only the end of November and they were really grasping how to use a number line to count up or count down. So we felt like it was very meaningful work.
Sorry, I'm just one grade level.
Third grade.
Third, okay. And I'm wondering if you're coaching the students, I thought the model was going to be more like coaching the teachers so that they could implement it and then. Basically, then your skill set would be multiplied times a hundred. So then, how is that going? Because you're saying that ninety-three percent. For target objectives was met. So how is it going as far as teacher being the objectives? Because I think simultaneously you'd be tracking data in both areas.
Yes, yeah. And, and I, I, I. Was introduced to a strategy that I had never seen before or hadn't used in the past.
Very fun.
And so it was really um, invigorating for me to see that. And it was powerful because. The kids were using something without friction, like they normally were challenged by when to regroup and how to do that. Caught up in the process and providing them with a number line and using the number line. They don't have to decide the rules of regrouping. They can just make meaningful jumps back. To what is, makes sense to them. So it was a new strategy and a flexible way of thinking about subtraction that we hadn't used before. And it's. Prove, it's yielded great results, I think. So.
What were the teachers doing? I didn't hear the answer to the question.
Well, Catherine is the teacher.
Okay. You're the coach. You're the teacher. Okay, I'm sorry, I don't know.
That's okay. We're out here.
How would I know that?
Right, right.
Yeah, okay, okay. Well, that makes sense. Well, great, congratulations. And yeah, the more you learn.
Sorry about that.
Kids learn. And yeah.
Yeah.
I haven't been in the schools.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Yes, the basic question, what's a number line?
So on the back. That's okay. On the back of your handout, you'll see that there is a number line. So the kids are. Starting with their starting number. In this case, the starting number was two hundred and thirty-two. Do you see that in the back, your number line?
Yes, got it, yeah.
Okay, so now it says that there was a hundred and eighty-six students that came. They needed to find the difference between those two numbers. So this student starts at two hundred and thirty-two. I know it looks a little foreign.
I didn't wear that.
Yes, right. And then they make a jump backwards on the number line, based on the numbers that they're comfortable with. So they learn how to subtract a hundred. And then from that, he subtracted eighty. And then from that, he subtracted six. So the total of a hundred and eighty plus six is a hundred and eighty-six. So he's actually taking away that number and landing on the. The answer to that problem, which is forty-six.
You're allowed to use the numbers you're comfortable with to subtract and not just use three num, two numbers. This is amazing. Well, in my opinion, it's amazing.
It, it is pretty exciting to us, so.
It's pretty what? I'm sorry.
It's pretty exciting to us.
Pretty exciting too. It's good. I, wow. Thank you for explaining it.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, I'm just curious how, how often groups are happening and is that a part of like the multi-tiered intervention or is that? Separate or in addition to it?
Maybe you wanna speak to what it looks like um, as a result of after like a post-coaching cycle.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Um, so the boost group that we form, so boost groups really are happening all of the time. So we're trying to provide that just in time intervention to, um, help move the students forward and prevent, you know, like moving into tier two or tier three intervention. So the boost group that happened after this coaching cycle, um, was two mornings a week for twenty-five minutes. The students were coming together and doing, um, additional.
Across different cla- classes, okay.
And it's just providing an extension of instruction that was happening in the coaching cycle.
Yes.
Cycle to try to see if we can clear up some misconceptions.
Thank you.
So I guess as a release to the whole building, um, we're in a, in a constant cycle of, um, administering assessments and then reviewing those as a team. Um, and the boost group work that's happening, um, here is something that we are really excited about. Um, and it's a direct result of the support we receive from the office and also, um, you all or the resources that have been necessary to help ensure that we've got staffing, um, that, uh, allows us to not have to pull, um, our interventions who were last year, kind of the first line of defense when teachers are out and we don't have subs. Um, you know, they're unable to deliver that. And so this year has been a total one-eighty, um, for the better. And, um, had a teacher just last night reach out to us thanking us for, um, all of the work, um, of those, um, individuals helping with the, the boost groups and, uh, all of the impact that it's already having on our students. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, right.
Uh, does every building have their own coach or they travel to different, uh?
Nope, we have one now in every, uh, every building.
Wow.
No.
Math and literacy, literacy coach in every building, all five schools, full-time, good in high school.
Long in the making of, uh, discussions.
Very, very powerful model and we are reaping the benefits of it, as you heard a little bit of that.
Absolutely amazing.
We want to, something that we want to continue to support.
Yes.
Such a return on investment, uh, for sure.
We've got to focus on that when we go to the budget, we go to budget time.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys don't.
Yeah.
Thanks for being so patient waiting. Thank you very much.
There's one last question. Let's do it math. Uh, what are ten, what's, is, they used to learn math by tens, by grouping things in tens, is that it? Now they no longer do that?
Still do that.
It's just more strategies, Joe, that's right. Okay, so it's added to their full.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Still use manipulatives too.
Let's keep, uh, so we're going to move on discussion action. We still have a number of items to get through. So we have discussion action proposed board of ed meeting date calendar for calendar year twenty twenty-four. Any, uh, questions concerning looking at the calendar?
Yeah, um, like board retreats, how do, how do we capture that on the calendar? Do we?
So we don't have one scheduled, that was in our board comments, I was going to mention that we want to get one in January, February timing.
Yeah, we usually add them, we've never had them on, just going to decide discussion.
Everyone's okay, does anyone want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting date calendar for the calendar year twenty twenty-four as presented.
Heard Bill. Uh, a little second, uh, further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Laura, are you?
She smiled, I think that means yes.
Thumbs up, good. Uh, opposed, abstain. Okay, calendar is set. Next item, we have discussion, um, and information, the Board of Ed Committee assignments for, for the twenty twenty-four calendar year. So, um, what's, was patched is the committee list that we had for this past year. We had some change, we moved some things around last year, so. How am I going in is maybe keep things as they are to an extent. And whoever the new person, whoever fills Candace's seat will fill Candace's places on the committee list. But if anyone has any, anything they want to do differently or any suggestions, I'm open to hearing. So if, uh, you can email me, uh, if you have any thoughts on any of this, I mean, so it could be on, from the subcommittees to the negotiating committees or anything. Um, if I don't hear of any, probably just keep it, uh, my recommendation be keep it the same. So, um, that's, uh, to do, uh, if people can email me.
It looks like the next.
Next.
Needed.
Uh, if you can email me in the next, we, that was very, then I can, I can have discussions with people that need it as well. So, uh, say by the eleven. The next item is, uh, something we do include every year. Tim Hagan recommended this, giving him, remember Tim, uh, that we just have, just as a good reminder for us all, uh, our annual review of the Board of, uh, Education Code of Ethics by laws nine two seven one. I don't think we're, there's nothing specifically to go over unless anybody had any questions for.
I think it's good that we reviewed, I think it's timely, I think it's great, so thank you for doing that.
Okay, so then we, moving on to eight D, we have discussion action item for the planetarium usage. And we have a letter that we need to approve if people want, Jeff, did you?
Yeah, just have the committee, uh, that, um, that met, um, and discussed. And, uh, happy to be in a continued partnership with the Star System, um, hopefully beyond five years. Um, but, uh, we wanted to, we were asked to put the, you know, five years in, which that was fine, and, uh, said to any before.
And the, the longer commitment, because we were doing year to year as it was forming and now that it's kind of formed, um, it will help the Star System, uh, both with grants and donors and seeing that this is like, there's a space and a go-forward entity. Um, not that we could pull it next year and just say, oh, we're using it as a classroom, uh, and, and it kind of goes away. So that was the, the benefit of making it a more extended, uh, and going more towards five years versus, uh, every year. Any questions? Comments?
I think it's a good idea. Do we need a motion to do this?
Need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ongoing use of the Islam High School Planetarium by Star System Incorporated as presented.
I got it.
Okay, um, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thumbs up, got it, thank you. Um, opposed, abstain. And motion passes. Thanks Diane.
Thank you, Star System.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you Diane.
Okay, and we added an A E, um, which is to discuss consent agenda. We had to discuss the consent agenda item was the recommendation to purchase a, a purchase, a, recommend the proposed purchase of replacement maintenance trust based on the recommendation of the Board FFO Subcommittee. So we did get presented, um, as a subcommittee, um, the need for a new truck. We worried to salvage and Jeff, you want to go into details, we were able to salvage, I think twenty-four thousand, was it?
Yes, right, yep, um, to go toward non-working, the non-working.
Um, but we're down, maybe you can talk to, we're down.
Chris is here too.
Yeah, you want to give a quick, just, we're still down, just like a one-minute blurb on, on.
Sure, so what we're going to do is continue the replacement of our existing fleet. We're not expanding it by any, uh, capacity. Uh, this, it would be the fourth of fifth vehicles. Um, we're looking to see an acquisition plan for this year, we'll be putting in one more truck either way. So, uh, if we were to buy this one, we'll also have one in for next year. If we don't get this one, then we in for the next two years. It's a basic pickup truck, uh, three fifty style, uh, keeping what the town has with the plow, using the boss plows, which town uses. Um, no utility box on this, so it's not a tool, tool carrying truck. It's basically just an outside grounds vehicle during a month a year, hopefully. Depending on snow and then it's house for us the rest of the time. So taking off statewide contract, which is the price that you see, which is approximately the sixty-three thousand dollars and change. Uh, we got it from a couple of different, uh, sources, one just happens to be in town as well, so we'd be doing, supporting local business. And, uh, that's it, and that's a bolt. Thank you, Chris.
So is the price, can you?
Yeah, go through the price and what we, yeah, it was in the Friday of.
We have two quotes, they're right in sixty-three thousand dollars and a couple hundred, uh, they're within seventy dollars of one another. So sixty-three, three something and sixty-three, four eighty-six, I think it was, or it could be that sixty-three, four thirty-six.
Something like that. We were going to use twenty-four thousand.
We use the twenty-four thousand is what we, uh, we got from the auctions of the old equipment. And then we're going to use existing budget, just budget for the rest, utility savings.
Yep, some savings in June. Sixty-three, two forty-eight, ninety-two and sixty-three, three nineteen, oh eight.
Three nineteen, oh eight.
Yep, but you liked the one vendor better, it was something that you'd worked with previously, I was not even.
Actually, we've used both vendors before, um, just this time, assuming it's still on the lot, there's one local. And, and that, you know, it's only seventy dollars, which is one trip to the other place if needed, so.
So can I, I just wanted to clarify, so was this in the budget? I know it was in the plan, but was it in the budget?
Not in the, no, not in the operating budget, we're down for, sold down two trucks. You buy a vehicle off the acquisition project for this year.
Right.
This one was not.
Okay, and then we auctioned off the old truck and equipment and we got twenty-four thousand dollars.
Auction off, uh, an old truck, two buses, two bus fans, uh, an old.
Three, three trucks.
Three trucks, excavator and a sender.
Sanders, a sander. And a senior.
Okay, and then the makeup of the sixty-three would be
Thirty-nine.
The utility savings in the budget, okay. Okay. And I'm sorry, I'm going to ask another question, which truck are you leaning towards, which price point?
Uh, the slightly higher one, because that's the local one.
The six-three, three-one-nine?
Yes.
Sorry.
Further discussion, questions? Anyone want to make any motion?
It's not going to be a consent. I would like to make a motion to replace the existing, oh gosh, now I got to make the one. Okay, replace the, recommend the proposed purchase of a replacement maintenance truck based on recommendation of the FFO Subcommittee, price not to exceed sixty-four thousand.
Second, please. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Well, opposed, and abstained. Okay. Uh, motion passes. Okay. Okay, that closes our discussion action items for the evening, and then move on to administration reports. Good job.
Yeah, just a couple of quick, um, updates. Um, one, I, uh, saw my update last week, the Education Foundation, um, great news, they received from the IRS, their status as a not-for-profit organization, so, uh, yeah, so they're, uh, they're up and running. So now it's just the beginning to generate funding and, uh, which is fantastic. So look on together and start that next step of, uh, some of that planning. Um, so look for more information, uh, there and, um, and Lisa and I will remain in touch with them as well, you know, Mariana. Um, I had talked to you previously about, uh, additional shared services with Salem. Um, we, we've got the shared services with facilities with Salem, we've got the shared services with, um, food services with Salem and shared services with security now on a, a smaller scale. So we're working on an hourly, uh, rate. Mariana and I are working on, um, a, uh, an agreement, we'll bring that agreement forward and to the, to the board. Again, probably just a couple of hours a month if that, um, just to help out in, uh, you know, maintaining their, running their drills. And, uh, you know, they, uh, work, uh, when they submit their emergency plans, um, yearly plans, uh, the development of those two. So, exciting, um, that we've got to continue shared services for Salem, all those capacities. Um, we have one more tomorrow, uh, meeting, so we're finishing up all the principals and departments, uh, each of the schools. Um, as we mentioned at the last workshop, uh, you know, we've been combing through that, um, and good news, you know, we've, you know, found some, um, our, we'll all increase, you know, for next year, so we'll bring that forward on the fourteenth at the workshop. Um, I was going to ask to make sure and remind everybody to be there on the fourteenth, but I think we cleared that. And, uh, we'll all, uh, we'll all be here for, uh, for that discussion, so bring all that, uh, all that forward. Um, and that was, uh, I was at everything else was in my Friday, Friday update for that.
Um, just a follow-up to our conversation, um, during the last board meeting around the after-school program and the concerns around capping for families. So I did have a follow-up meeting with, uh, Mrs. Scott. And she is reaching out to, I think it was Candace who recommended Key Club, but looking for some additional, um, students who can help volunteer on those days, um, to open up some more spaces for families. We do have a waiting list for one of the days of about eight families, so, uh, we're looking at that date in particular to start. Uh, but she's also going to bring back some other ideas that she and I had, um, brainstormed to her staff to see if there are some more changes we can make this year to accommodate more families in a safe way. Uh, but definitely long-term, the, um, concept of keeping those after-care programs building base will definitely be in the plan so that we don't have to turn any families away. And we have appropriate stuff. So we have some changes in the works, I just wanted to report that out to the board. Um, I can't make any promises that we, we'll get to a space where we aren't turning families away, but it is our goal not to have to do that. Uh, while still maintaining, um, safe environments with the staffing and the volunteers that we do have.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay.
Hi, uh, just a really quick update, my office, I don't know if, um, any of you know, we have some shifts, so we have, uh, one of our, my forty-year employee, she will be retiring. So, um, we have one employee shifting into her position and then my, uh, another person started today, that's just some overlap. So really excited to have her on board, she actually has some, uh, experience in her previous district with Munis. So she'll be a great asset to, um, the department. And, um, Munis is going along, we are moving along, so I see a light at the end of the tunnel. We are, for, uh, for, for, uh, our general ledger. Um, and I have auditors coming in this week to review the EFS, which was the old ED O O one, that's it.
Thanks, Laura. Hey, um, that closed our administration boards, committee reports. Like, any, any updates?
I have some key updates here. So, um, on Wednesday, the sixth, is a new board orientation leadership conference. I know Jeff is speaking at one of the breakouts, I'm going to be part of one of the breakouts. Um, if you want to come, but there's still two days to register if you want to come, that's why I don't know, you coming? No, you can't do it, okay. Um, but that's on the sixth. And then, uh, January twenty-fourth is another webinar on the board's role in advocacy. Um, and that's taking sign-ups now, it's the twenty-fourth at eleven. Um, that's all I have right now, your new magazine just came in the mail yesterday, so that's it.
Jamie, um, board comments?
Good question. Not to belabor, a special meeting. Um, I know you're.
Not to belabor the special meeting, um I know you're circling back to get the attorney input.
Yep.
Can we understand what that, what our process will be before we go into the meeting?
Hundred percent, yeah, hundred percent. Uh, we will, we'll get it laid out from Jessica, step by step. Here's the process, here's what you do, and then we will follow that. And we should keep that for the future as well, so that it will become our practice. Whatever we do this time should become our practice uh for the future. Yes, we can retain that um. Other board comments? So when we do, I do want, when we fill Candace's um seat, I do think it'd be good. So in the January, February time to get a, have a board retreat, so we can talk more about that as it comes, but. Group, what do we wanna work on, what we wanna focus on for the oncoming year or years? And um I think it's always good early in the deeper to get together and and talk about that. So um I will propose that as we get closer and sort out the the board seat and get through that.
I'd like, I'd just like to suggest we have more children. That was delightful, those first graders, that was. So what I'm saying is, I know we have a lot of new pol- not policies, but just ways we're educating children. And having a children community to do it is, well, first of all, it's it's great reinforcement for them, in my opinion, building self-esteem. But it's just so much easier to understand and I was just like, having the children here, that's what we're all here for. So if you can encourage the teachers to bring them in or the staff, sit and watch them all day, I think. So that's just my only suggestion, I love the kids. Just reacting to the Star System update that we got, that was fantastic. And you know, going forward, it sounds like this is evolving, right? And um if there's an opportunity to get some kind of cadence to an update for for that program, to understand how it's, you know, being, what is, you know, the use of a better curriculum, kind of that all those sort of innovative work. What's going on behind that?
That would be great, yes, so we can um ask Diane and the team to give an update periodically. Uh, we do still have the Stars to Stem Committee, which is, I think, Kate, me and myself. We met. Thank you, um and and we, but periodically, if anyone, if any of the board members has not gotten to go to the podium actually see the show, uh definitely worth doing. Uh, and anybody else uh in the public, it's definitely worth doing. It's it's pretty interesting, uh pretty well-run and uh.
Every Saturday now.
Is it every Saturday?
Diane's working on the series. Yeah, we're working on getting dates on the calendar for her latest series.
Okay, she does, okay.
The thing I would appreciate is if we had a a calendar of different things that were, that are going on, that we would be invited or welcome to attend and be part of them, you know, I think as a board member, it's nice to, it's not just nice. It's informative, it's helpful, it gives me insight. I think it's a good practice for each of us to attend as much as we're welcome to attend. Or sports and um theater.
Yeah, the best, there's apps, there's, yeah, there's all sorts.
No single calendar, but if we go to each like swag or whatever you wanna call it.
Everything's in the sway, yeah, which we push out in the weekly update.
Sway, sorry.
The update usually has, you know, little links, everything.
Because I know. Welcome to attend those things, is what you're saying.
Well, cool, if you see something, let's have a conversation about it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Because Lee, you had talked one time, I remember, about having a calendar.
Yeah, I don't know why it didn't come.
Yeah, it won't sink for everybody, it's too hard.
There's also two, and ended up, there's, we got to decide what events, because you end up with six thousand, you know, there's so many events such that, are you putting all the the cool athletic events, are you putting the, all the band events, all the play events, all the, and we ended up, when we started going through it, we started in color coding and stuff, we're like, wow, we got this, like, it it's almost unreal these. So we gotta figure, we we could talk about that at the retreat, if there's like certain things that we wanna hit upon.
I don't wanna create work for, additional work for anyone, everyone's plates are al- already so full. But even with like our district calendar and specific school calendars, it would be nice if there was a function where families, board members, community members could click add to, because everyone has like either Google Cal and Outlook Cal. Everyone has kind of their own personal calendars at this point and having, instead of like a PDF version, it could be helpful to have one where you could have it all uploaded to your calendar, um I think. I forget which, I forget which one of the some school districts, I forget which one um did that, it was really helpful. So something to chew on for next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, put a student on it.
Yeah.
That one this into a computer.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstained and.
He's doing great, she's loving it.